Good evening. Does this thing turn on? Yep, it is. Welcome to the Milford Township Municipal Building and the Monthly Planning Commission Meeting. This time I call the meeting of October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to order. All please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you haven't already signed the attendance sheet back there, please do before you leave. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce the members of the planning commission and our support staff, starting at my far left. There, yep, Ray Reed. Next to him is Dave Fagate. Pete Cabea. Oh, I'm sorry, Doug Prozan.
So soon.
Over here, Pete Cabea. Tony Sitter. And Denise Bizarro, the Recording Secretary. On my left in the back is Jennifer Hernandez in the Township Council. And next to her is Matt Walligan, the Director of Planning and Development. And on the right back there is Julie Maggio. She's the Assistant Zoning and Development Officer. And Matt Puzz is a zoning development officer. And I am James Skolmeyer. Before we begin, I would be called for motion to amend to last month's meeting as written.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Milford Planning Commission is a recommending bar that hears testimony, asks and answers questions, deliberates and passes our recommendations on to the supervisor who makes the final decisions on issues brought before us. The subdivision and/or land development plan discussed tonight, if acted on by the planning commission, will be considered by the township supervisors at their regular meeting to be held on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at four thirty P. M. in this building here. The first item on the agenda for tonight. There it is. Can't screw them up there. First item on the agenda for tonight is TJK. KTKJ Associates LLC. It's a subdivision plan to show the creation of four thousand seventeen square foot parcel A from thirty seventeen West Twelfth Street, resulting in a twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-nine square foot residual lot. Parcel A has become an integral part of thirteen thirteen Harper Drive, resulting in a twenty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-five square foot lot located southeast corner of West Twelfth Street and Harper Drive in that, in track fourteen. Who is here to represent that? Sir, up here, please, and give us your name and address.
Chad Jakes from TKJ and Associates. Home address, or do you want our business address?
Address.
Thirty seventeen West Twelfth Street.
All right. So you're breaking off a portion of that existing lot and adding it to a different one there on the back side, right?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for him?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to say anything about this? Okay. The next item on the agenda then is the enclave. It's a land development plan to show the construction of a six duplex dwellings with associated stormwater management facilities and parking at thirty-five thirty-one West Lake Road, located at southeast intersection of West Lake Road and Linden Avenue in track number nine. Someone here for that, sir?
Hi, my name is Jake Schlosser with David Laird Associates. The proposed building here we're going to do is six multifamily units with the proposed stormwater and development with that. The main reason we're not attaching and exiting and entering off of West Lake Road is we don't want to create any more traffic on that road at a high rate of speed. So we think it's safer to come in and out of Linden Road where they'll be heading most likely north as well. If you guys have any more questions, I could do my best to answer them or find an answer for you.
Questions?
So you're doing a van in the curb cut that was on West Lake Road, is that correct?
Yes, we'll be in putting in a sidewalk, correct.
You will be putting a sidewalk?
I did not design the project, but from what I look like, it appears so. I can confirm that. I don't know if we're deferring it or not. Is there a sidewalk on the development to the east?
There isn't to the east.
Okay, then maybe we would probably be deferring it then, yeah.
And there is a bike path out in front. Do your plans indicate, they don't indicate, but are your plans to have any buffer zone on the back of the properties that face Linden and also will be visible from West Lake Road? Will there be a natural buffer zone as part of your plan, or what's going to go in there?
My recollection, and again, I didn't work on this project, but I'm slightly familiar, is there's a buffer C-zone. And I believe that is on, it would be the, the south line running perpendicular to Linden, where the entrance is.
I understand that, but what about a buffer zone between the back of the, the three buildings to the west and Linden and West Lake Road? Is there going to be a buffer zone there?
It does not appear so as of now.
They don't need one. I understand you don't need one by code, but is there a plan to put one in, is my question?
I'm not positive on that.
You're not what?
I'm not positive on that, no.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for him? Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this? Come up here, please, give us your name and address.
My name is Michelle Michael. My address is eight twenty-seven Clifton. My question is, I know that more people are more familiar with why they can't have the entrance on West Lake Road, which is a more common road, as opposed to putting an entrance on a residential street. I run on that street and five A. M. It's already dangerous enough for me. I'm out running and I have lights on, but now we're entering a area where we're going to put a second driveway with eighteen buildings, people coming and going. They're probably not paying attention as they're coming out versus, I don't run on West Lake Road for a reason. So is there a possibility to make the entrance on West Lake Road where there's already a road? We don't need to add a driveway to make it unsafe for people who already live there? There's no sidewalk, so the kids are already out playing.
The traffic study that they did on that is telling us that there's going to be thirty trips per day, the whole day long, with that whole complex, which is pretty minimal. And it would seem to me that it would be safer to egress onto Linden.
How many, how many residences are going to be there?
There's going to be twelve buildings, or I don't know the number of residents.
Twelve units.
So twelve units, so if you have, so six buildings, twelve units, if you have two driving adults coming and going every day, you're telling me that's only thirty?
That's what the traffic study is.
I don't think that's correct.
That's what it is. I mean, that's the average.
Yes.
For this type of development.
Fair enough, but last time we didn't want a road there. This time we still don't want a road there.
Now, this isn't, this is coming way up in the front, where there was an existing means of egress.
Correct.
Are you following me?
I know what a means of egress is, I just don't like the idea of more traffic with kids playing there.
Yeah, I'll pick up right there, too. Dustin Thornton, eight twenty-five Linden. I'm on the, right on the very back corner of where the development would be. And I, I didn't come in today wanting to be difficult. We don't want to fight this. We want to get to somewhere where everybody can be happy. That's, that's the first thing I want to say. As far as this Linden Avenue entrance, last year when this was discussed, or last time, I mean, they said that they had to have two forms of egress. That's why it was on Linden Avenue. They had to have two forms. They had to have two forms. That was said over and over and over and over again by the developers. We've now, I realized today when I thought about this, how many subdivisions, how many cul-de-sacs do we have that have one form of egress? So I realize, of course, that's possible. Now I see they also realize it's possible and they're putting it on Linden. This is going to sound selfish, but let's be real. We don't want the traffic on our street. If it's more dangerous to pull out on West Lake, they're still facing the same danger if they pull out on Linden. Linden is a road that goes nowhere. They're either going to West Lake or they're going to Twelfth Street. West Lake's thirty-five, Linden's twenty-five, Twelfth Street's forty. You're facing danger no matter what. You have to just learn to pay attention. I've been living on Linden for ten years. I've been spending time on Linden my entire life. And it's always been dangerous to leave Linden at either end. Twelfth Street, West Lake, does not matter. They're both really dangerous intersections and adding traffic adds danger. It puts more pressure on the people waiting in line to go because they've got people lined up behind them. And I realize what you said about the traffic study, but extremely unrealistic. I would say in our household with two vehicles, we come and go no less than ten to twelve times a day. And that's, you know, six times, you know, round trip. So if that study is accurate, that's debatable, but some people go way, way more than what says and some people, of course, less. That's where you get your average, but it's not realistic. It's not. And I, I mean, I like the changes we see. We don't see the duplexes coming way up by our houses. They're not using the woods, so we are making a step in the right direction, but we, everyone here will adamantly fight this. We don't want that traffic on our street. That's all there is to it. And it's, it's really not selfish. The neighborhood's been that way. It's always been that way. Entrances all the way down West Lake Road, every business, everybody manages perfectly fine, and these residents can do the same. If we could just get that one thing resolved, then this would be easy. Also, on another note, I thought that duplexes originally in the current zoning weren't allowed. Am I mistaken?
There was an amendment in two thousand twenty-three? Yeah, sorry. Two thousand twenty-three and duplexes were added to the MU one district. Okay. Yeah.
I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. Dominic Berlin, I live in eight twenty Linden Avenue, or, yeah. So I'm just going to third the whole driveway on to West Lake Road. I think they could keep that current driveway on Linden, but at least put a second one on West Lake Road, so not all the traffic needs to funnel onto Linden. Even with your traffic study saying thirty, we can take that into consideration, but what else is not getting taken into consideration is how many people use Linden Avenue as a pass-through from West Lake to Twelfth. My kids ride their bikes on that road almost every day and we're constantly having to yell "car" so they get out of the way. And we have so much through traffic coming through Linden that if you're going to put all of the traffic on the Linden from six more places using one driveway, one that could cause congestion in that one driveway, and it's just going to add a whole bunch more traffic on the Linden Avenue. Also, this might sound terrible, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Are these going to be open to section eight?
I don't think so.
Okay. I don't know how that works. I'm not a very smart person, so.
If I heard this correctly, they're, they're shooting for fifty-five and up, which is another reason why the traffic study was as low as it is.
Okay.
Because it's going to either, I don't know this for sure, but I believe it said they're, they're shooting for older people to live in there.
Okay.
Who are you calling older?
My age.
Yeah, so I would just say, if you could, still put a second driveway on there, so at least it gives them more options on how to get in and out of their own properties, too. Thank you.
I don't think you're giving them enough credit for closing off that West Lake Road. They're calling it the enclave, which is going to turn out to be what it is. It'll be separate and kind of a private little neighborhood. But if you opened up West Lake Road, then you're going to have people driving through both, and I think it would increase the, the danger to your kids.
So you're saying you'd think West Lake Road traffic would divert through that?
If you had both of them, you suggested they have two entrances.
Yes.
Well, I, I think that would be a disservice to, to you.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
Well, now there's only, West Lake Road, people can't be driving from West Lake Road all the way up, cutting through this to get out to Linden. I don't think you're giving them enough credit. You don't think it ahead.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that would happen, but I could understand how it probably...
People would cut through, I know that.
Oh, I'm a truck driver. I see everything on the road. I understand.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
John Michael, eight twenty-seven Clifton Drive. I just want to agree with the last two, three people up here. I think that there needs to be an extra access onto West Lake Road. And Mr. Prozan, I thoroughly disagree with people cutting through there. I don't think that's going to happen too often, especially with a parking lot being there and cars being parked inside of the enclave. It's just not going to be a reason to go cut through there. You're not going to save any time. So that's real I have to say is I just think there needs, the, the plan looks great, other than I think there needs to be an extra entrance onto or off of West Lake Road.
Hello, Sam Comfort, nine oh three Linden Avenue. Regardless of the entrance or exits, if you insist on having two, you know, if they want to use that Linden Avenue exit, why don't you cut the curb to make them make a right turn only, funnel it back out towards West Lake Road? There's your two entrances. You still keep your entrance and exit coming off of West Lake Road itself because it should be used. It's there. And if the issue of safety turning in and out of West Lake Road is a problem, why don't install your rumble strips and your little blinky gold lights at least on West Lake Road? I know that doesn't do much, but it's still one more point of emphasis on folks to slow down as they're coming down West Lake Road. Regardless, as Dusty pointed out, it's a pain to turn out either way, but whoever's using Linden or Clifton or any of those streets know that you have to do the inch, look a bajillion times before you can make that turn. So I guess to echo everything that's already been said, if you insist on having the two entrance points and/or exit points, make the exit on Linden that's technically there, that little driveway, a right turn only to funnel you back towards West Lake. And then your entrance and exit cut is on West Lake Road. Thank you.
I'm going to add enough ways, I just want to say something really quick. I know Sam didn't see the new plan. He's missing a really important point. They don't need two entrances. They've proven that with their plan. All right. We don't want an entrance on Linden, period. One entrance, West Lake Road, if you want it to be safe, put a sign for them that says "right turn only." Because you put a right turn only sign on Linden, me and everybody else in the world is going to ignore it when nobody's looking.
No, no, no.
I'm just being honest. I do it all the time where it says "no right turn on red, no left-hand turn." If it's safe, I've been driving for twenty-five years.
This is just to egress the, the, the property. If I, if I read you correctly, it's just to egress the property.
I'm saying just to have that only egress on West Lake Road. And then you, you talked about having, if they had two, people would cut through there and come more traffic on Linden. That's incorrect. If that happened, those would be people that were already using Linden as a shortcut. So who would affect is their residents. They would have more traffic if people were cutting through the subdivision to get onto or off of Linden. So it would actually benefit them to have a single entrance just on West Lake. Then we're all happy, they're happy, they can move forward with their project and not have friction with the neighborhood. They can be good neighbors, we can be good neighbors. That's what we all want here.
Anyone else?
Our only, the traffic study that you guys have, and our belief is the traffic will not be increased because of the original building was a restaurant, if I'm correct. So typically restaurants attract more, more traffic, more daily trips than a residence does. And the initial, our initial plan, we had the drive heading south with a second drive on Linden. That was because we had to skinny up the drive and put residences on both sides. With us making this drive bigger where it is proposed now, you're able to have one egress and ingress. So I, I just want to echo the, the safety concerns that we would have if you have two egress and ingress of West Lake Road right next to each other. It would be a hundred, hundred fifty feet between Linden Avenue and then the one that other ones are proposing, if that makes sense. So, thank you.
And above all, thirty trips a day.
Right, correct.
At this complex at fifty-five and older residents.
Correct.
It's not a lot of traffic.
And typically the daily trip, the daily trips that are calculated by the I T E are, they're factored of safety typically.
I think your, your previous point about what was there before and the amount of traffic that that created versus this is like night and day.
And, and the traffic before was in on West Lake and all out on Linden.
And the traffic won't be as consistent either. It'll be spaced out more, I would believe. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just really quick, too, with that, I realized a minute ago, I'm kind of talking to the wrong people. I'm, I'm talking to all of you guys trying to help you hear our plea and see our perspective. I think I should really be talking to the owners. Have you guys considered just from an appearance standpoint, you want to sell this as a high-end community, you want to sell it as a luxury, anything? Why would you put your entrance on a tiny old street with tiny old houses? Put it on West Lake Road, make it beautiful, make it gated, make it look nice. You'll benefit yourselves. Like we, like you said, we can go back and forth for this, hopefully until the idea is completely tossed in the trash. And we're happy to do that, we'll fight for our, our neighborhood until we die. And we're not going to stop, but they need to look at the bigger picture. Where, all of you consider it, if you were looking for a nice community to pull into and upper class, as we keep being told, where would you want to pull it? On West Lake Road where all of the beautiful things down by Fresco are, all the beautiful businesses, the plaza with all the flowers all summer, everything's beautiful down there. They have to. Saying this to all of us, and I don't need any offense, it's all falling apart tiny street. It's, it's our apartment, we love it, we're all happy there, but it's not luxury. I mean, it's not. And the same thing on Clifton, the whole neighborhood is a beautiful, small, nice community, but it does not fit what you're building. And you're calling it the enclave, you had a little discussion last time about pushing that earlier. You're an outside community, you don't have it in our community, so therefore don't put your entrance in our community. Just put it on West Lake Road, make it look really, really nice, and people will be so focused on how nice it looks. They won't think about the traffic issue until after they buy it.
Waiting for these idiots to, they take so long to get out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we saying, like, it's thirty total trips per day for all of these units?
That's the study that we've done.
That's the study.
Not just for this thing here, but that's the average overall that they've done for traffic.
Per, not even per person, we're talking for the, all of, all of this. Correct, okay. So if it is that minimal of a number, why can't we put this on West Lake Road only?
The developers want to do it this way.
I, the developers want to do it that way. I agree. Like, I know what they want to do.
You have to remember, they were originally going up on this area here and making another egress on Linden. And that's all shut off.
We're not talking about that anymore, though. We're talking about this.
Correct.
Right.
Talking about this now.
Yes.
So you're going to have that minimal amount of cars coming out on Linden and running down.
Well, you just, everyone, we keep saying minimal. If it is that minimal, why can't we just put it on West Lake Road and not, just hang on, put it on West Lake Road and we don't have to worry about any extra traffic on Linden, at least not a mo, not much. And there is already a curb cut and an entrance for the old Aviation Club and the restaurant that was thereafter. If it is that minimal at thirty-three cars, I really don't think it's going to affect that much traffic in that area of West Lake Road. That's just my personal opinion.
I would just point out aesthetically, it would, the entrance on Linden would be superior to the entrance on West Lake.
Not if you just said, not if you just said whatever Dustin just said, as far as you could. You could put like a nice marble sign out front or something, put some lights on it, hang some plants from it. You can make it look really nice.
It would be on West Lake Road.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, what's wrong with the West Lake Road? Thirty-three, thirty-three cars, you've said it many times. That doesn't seem like that many cars.
I'm talking about the traffic on West Lake Road. There'd be a lot of it.
Yeah. We're interrupting the traffic on West Lake Road thirty-three times a day.
Do you drive on West Lake Road?
Yeah, I don't, I don't live far from here.
On a side street, just, just to clarify for you, because I can tell you feel really strongly about this, on West Lake Road, the right way, all the residents here can confirm, because we do it every day, you pull up to the stop sign, you wait, it is impossible. There is no safe way to go, except the one simple answer to the problem with this thirty cars a day is you wait for the traffic lights. There's non-stop all traffic, and then there's a ten to twenty-second gap when the lights change, and then you go. And it's perfectly safe, there's no traffic, it's like there's not another car on the road. But during that time between lights, when the traffic's all coming through, yeah, it's a wall, you can't get out. And there's no, that, that will actually prevent accidents. You won't walk there and have an idea that you could go because there is no way to go. And there's no, that, that will actually prevent accidents. You won't plot there and have an idea that you could go because there is no way to go. These people, if, if they move in there, thirty cars a day, they have a small line leaving their exit. Just like on Linden, multiple times a day, we have a small line at the, at the heat head of the road at the stop signs. It's separating the traffic. It's letting our traffic stay our traffic, their traffic be their traffic. And we, we all bought our houses knowing about the dangers of Westlake Road and Twelve Street. These people will be able to see Westlake Road before they buy. And it's, it's been, you're saying these people, these people pay taxes in Milk Creek just like you. So if they're gonna move there, they're gonna pay taxes just like you.
And they would have the same access. Okay, alright.
Up here if you want to, please.
I was gonna say something.
But I didn't mean these people in a sort of condescending way.
I, I want to ask you a question. If you bought, if you bought one of these units on the, on the north end, would you rather have your backyard with a road in it or would you rather have it sealed off so it's private?
That's, I don't understand that question at all.
If you, if you-
If I lived in that community.
Yeah, on the north end.
I would want to be proud to arrive at the entrance of my community. I'd want to be proud of the guests arriving. I'd want them to come to a nice community on a nice street. Not come to a nice community on a tiny little side street. It's not-
No, I'm asking-
The whole traffic argument is not real. Last year, the last time, the argument was they were saving, they wanted to preserve the old growth trees. All of the trees they cut down were the old growth trees and that's all they did was cut down the trees. They left all the mulch piles in the woods. They mow a strip by the road. If they don't clean up their property, it's like something out of-
But you didn't answer my question. If you lived in one of those north units, would you rather have an enclave with trees and a buffer to Westlake Road? Or would you rather have a road entrance coming right past your house?
The entrance on Westlake Road doesn't need to be in somebody's backyard.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would call the question to end, uh, make a motion that we end debate because I think we're just talking past each other now.
Come on, come on up.
Were you coming up here?
The converse of that question, Heidi Bender, eight seventeen Linden. The converse of that question obviously is if you had small children playing on eight seventeen Linden, would you rather add, I know you're saying thirty some cars. I think it would be higher than that. Would you rather have an extra thirty some cars on Linden or would you rather have them on Westlake Road?
But the cars have already been there through the two restaurants that have been there. You have the same amount of traffic there.
Right, but there's an opportunity right now to add a level of protection for the children. There's an opportunity to do things different and besides, the restaurants did have the two entrances.
We don't, ingress off of Westlake Road and egress off of Linden.
Right.
Probably had more traffic during the peak hours at coming onto Linden, which you will not now. This is a, this is also gonna enhance your neighborhood. These are nice, well-built condominiums going in here, townhouses. And I think it would enhance this whole neighborhood.
I have no doubt that they're, they're going to be well-built and I have no doubt that they will look nice. I have no doubt about that at all, but if there's a way to accomplish both the enclave and protect the neighborhood.
What they accomplish is, is who they're trying to attract. They're trying to attract the fifty-five and older and keep the traffic minimal here. It, it's actually a good thing. It's, it could be worse.
It could be worse. I agree. It could be worse, but it could be better.
They're building this to accommodate a certain elderly population, which benefits the traffic, which is the big problem now. Which, which is, is not gonna be a problem because it's not gonna be any greater than it was.
But also it could be better. Like, there could, there's an opportunity right now to take a step to move that minimal amount of traffic onto Westlake Road. So while you say, you know, could be worse, true, I'm not arguing that point, but also could be better. Because what I'm thinking of is, you know, my niece is four, nephew's six and eight, and I worry about them playing on the street. So and I worry about added traffic because already right now we have cars whizzing up and down Linden. Since they did the airport extension, it's even worse.
Hi, Jeanette Dugan, eight twenty-five Linden Avenue. You say fifty-five is elderly. I'm forty-three. That's twelve years from now. At forty-three, I work two jobs. At forty-three, I leave to go to job one, I come home, I go to job two, I come home. I leave, I go to the grocery store. I don't want to make dinner, I leave, I go get food. Oh, I came home from the grocery store. I came home from getting food. That's nine trips in one day. That's not, that's one person. And I have him leaving two to three times a day. Thirty times, that's not, I understand mature survey says, that's not, that's not updated. That's, there's no way. It's only gonna be thirty trips with twenty-four people, twelve buildings times two people is twenty-four. Plus fifty-five and older, is that, are we excluding children? Is it just adults? They're not having children in these buildings? Okay, well, let's say they do have children in these buildings. I can tell you where the bus stop is for middle school and for elementary school. And I can also tell you that you're gonna want to drive your child to the bus stop, especially in the wintertime. My daughter is eleven. Right now she's allowed to walk to the bus stop, which is three blocks away. In wintertime, she's not walking because it's gonna be too cold. That's two more trips, me to drop her off and drive back home, me to pick her up and drive back home. Oh, that's four. For elementary, it's on Tenth and Linden. They're still gonna want to drive their little children up there unless they're driving them all the way to the school. What is the address of this property?
Address?
Yeah.
It's thirty-five thirty-one West Lake Road.
Right, thirty-five thirty-one West Lake Road. So that's where the entrance should be, is on West Lake Road. Also, last year when we had this conversation, there was, I wouldn't say agreements, but openness to the entrance being on West Lake Road. She knew we wanted the entrance on West Lake Road. Still did this with the entrance on Linden. There is two, and I hate to bring up the past, nothing but lies. We're gonna keep the landscape. We're not gonna tear down. Ninety percent of those woods are gone. Ninety percent. And I can tell you that ninety percent of those animals are in my yard. I have seen way more skunks, way more snakes, five million more spiders, deer. There's a deer right in my backyard the other day. We've always had here. Coyotes, like, they have gone up since the woods have gone down. In twenty seventeen, and we keep talking about the restaurant, the restaurant, the restaurant. That closed in twenty seventeen. So we haven't had restaurant traffic in eight years. So I don't really know what the restaurant traffic has to do with now, but now we're more worried about what's going on on Linden. And I don't really think it's a big ask for the entrance that the restaurants used on Westlake Road to be on Westlake Road. That's all I really have.
Can I ask you a question? Would you prefer the restaurant to be there or, or this development?
The restaurant. Hundred thousand percent.
Those restaurants never had very crowded.
John Bocicchio, eight eighteen Clifton Drive. We keep talking about the restaurant and the traffic. One thing that we have to factor in is when you dumped all the traffic from the airport runway project down Clifton and down Linden, when it was supposed to go down Marshall and then you blocked Marshall off. So you are talking about, oh, the restaurant traffic. My issue is soon as that runway went in, the traffic picked up, cars fly up and down our road all day long. I can't even sit on my front porch and have my computer and listen to anything because it's so loud and there's so many cars flying up and down the road. So to you, an extra thirty cars doesn't seem like a lot, but when you dumped hundreds of cars down our street with that project, yeah, it's a lot. It adds more. So that's my first point. My second point. How, how big is the retention pond here gonna be? Do you have dimensions on that?
Is this to scale? It is to scale. You can see, it is to scale right here. Okay, so it's gonna be relatively large, I would say.
Seventy-five feet.
Okay, um, does that, is that water, is there a pump in there? Is it moving or is it just stagnant water?
It infiltrates in the ground. It dissipates.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, that is a concern of mine, um, with, you know, how the retention pond is gonna be handled. I'm up towards the end of this, so this doesn't affect me as much, but the traffic does. Um, and then I was wondering what's gonna happen with the rest of the property. Is that gonna stay the way it is? Do you have any plans for that? Okay.
Not an issue for this.
We're just looking at this development right now.
Okay. Is there, you know, potential building gonna happen there? I know it's zoned residential. Uh, do you have any intention?
We're not here to talk about that.
Okay. Okay.
I think, now that's a concern. And I'm not sure what they're gonna do, but if they subdivided that off, they can put one house back there.
Right, okay. And, uh, so, you know, there are concerns with the retention pond, what's gonna happen with that property. And also, like I said, you know, you keep saying, I feel like you're minimizing the thirty cars a day, adding the hundreds that you already put down our street. You know, and then that extra thirty on top of that. So it's a problem. It ru- it's ruined our residential neighborhood. It's made it a, 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 you know, it's a freeway practically. So, thank you.
Were you gonna say something else?
Uh, it was the same thing, but yeah. That was, that was related to exactly what I, I just wanted to bring that up, is that the restaurant traffic was never a thing. There was, you know, the restaurants were private. The first one was private. Everybody came in one entrance and out the same entrance. And then the restaurant that was there for a little while that I hear did well, I never saw it. I never saw a car there. I didn't realize the restaurant was even open. But they were, I think, doing what a lot of people did in the past and they were not using that one-way entrance as a one-way entrance. They were just going out the same way they came in, the same way many of us have probably done at McDonald's once in a while. If you go to pull out, you see a bunch of traffic, you see it's easy to go out the entrance, you just go out the entrance. And I, I know, like I said, I've been there my whole life. It's, the traffic has gotten really bad. That point was just brought up. I, I didn't consider that, yeah, when they brought Marshall down through, they put a lot of traffic onto our street. That's cars that we have daily doing highway speeds down Linden. And- No, no, it's not their fault. We're saying that Linden is no safer than Westlake. It, and it's adding unnecessary traffic to us. We just don't, we don't need it. There's not a reason for it. And, and as keeps being brought up, we're, we're being misled over and over and over again. And it's, it's always, this is the reason, that's the reason, and then the reason's proven later to be completely untrue. The, the big issue is trust.
What's untrue that we've-
That we, that we have to have two forms of egress in the first place. Not you guys, not at all. I'm talking about the developers. I'm saying they, they told us they had to have an entrance on Linden last time.
They made all these changes based on your input.
They, they made some changes. But, but they also, and as was just brought up with the, the unplanned part of the project, once, once they're in, once everything is done, they can freely do basically whatever they want. This is, this is our time to take a stand.
But I said they can put one house there.
One house that would then have to have a driveway right through my yard, I'm sure.
It's their, it's their property.
It could come off Linden also.
It, it is their property and that's why they, they can freely develop it to code, but we don't understand why.
I can't discuss that today. We're just on this project today. I can't discuss what possibly might happen in the future here and attach it to this property. We're just looking at, and I think we've covered the traffic. So if anybody has anything else to go through other than traffic, we've heard the concerns of everybody here on traffic. And we also have our studies that we have to consider. And so we've kind of exhausted that, but if anybody has any other considerations other than traffic, we'd love to hear them.
Yeah, and that's, I, I think why traffic keeps coming up is because I, I think I'm speaking for the group when I'm saying we don't feel heard. You guys are, are saying that defending the traffic and it's, there's nothing to defend. It's, it should be a non-issue. You keep saying like it's, it's what's better for those residents. When I said them earlier, I wasn't trying to be condescending. I'm saying them because they're not, they're not here yet. They're not people. They're not us. They're not in the community at all. They're just, I don't know who, them. And that's, that's the same thing. We knew what we signed up for when we bought our houses. That traffic issue, they can consider before they buy. They're not here yet. They're still there. When they come, they can, if the traffic is too scary, somebody else will face it. It's not that bad.
Go to the airport authority yet? I mean, that seems to be what you're really complaining about, is the traffic because of the airport.
No, it's not the airport traffic. It's what the township did with the road going around the airport and then closing Marshall. They closed Marshall so that people wouldn't go all the way down and be going highway speeds through a residential neighborhood because they assumed dog legging to Clifton or Linden would slow them down. Sure, it slows them down, but they're still doing highway speeds. They're just doing it down our streets instead of those streets. Right, but that, I didn't bring that up and that's not the issue. The issue is just put the traffic on Westlake Road. It's simple. It's not like, i- i- it's not, it seems to us that you guys feel like we're, we're out of line for wanting that, but it's not an issue.
Everything, everybody said. I think we've overtalked the, the traffic, but we're, we're going to have our meeting and we're gonna discuss all of this stuff and make our decisions based on what you have to say and based what we have in front of us. But if there's anything else that we need to, that, that we need to bring up, we should bring that up also if anybody else has something else to say.
Yeah, fair enough. That's, that's all I had to say. And I, like I said, for everybody, I think the traffic's the only real big concern.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Nicole Fiersdorf. I live at eight seventeen Linden Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you for listening to us, for our concerns, for making the adjustments you made. Like, the plan looks so much better than I feel like it did last year. I, I have to say that. Obviously, the traffic is our, I think, oh, you can hear it echoing, that that is the issue. I do have young children on that street. I have a four-year-old, a six-year-old and an eight-year-old. And so that is our main concern, but I did want to say thank you. I, I don't feel like, I feel like we all got off on the wrong foot last year and I think that now this year, that we can maybe try and come together and try and do this more as a team. And I think that if there's any way you could potentially alter your plan or even have not just the one entrance, maybe an additional. I understand that you're putting lots of money into this. I understand that you're, have a vision. And I think that if we work together, we could earn a level of respect and that we could all be happy. So that's just what I wanted to come up here and say.
Have you considered running for supervisor?
Okay, anybody else with, any new things? Alright, Dee, I'm, I'm sorry, please come up.
This probably sounds very petty. I'm at seven two seven Linden Avenue. And, um, I just had an exterminator at my house yesterday who tells me my problem is coming from the trees that have been chopped down in that area. And there's carpenter ants and flying ants that look like termites and all that type of thing. So my question is, will that get cleaned up in the meantime?
I'm guessing, but they want, these homes are gonna be pretty expensive down here, these townhouses. They want to make their place look nice. They're not, they, they want this to look nice, I, I would think. And they're gonna attract, because of the price of them, they're gonna attract a, a pretty nice clientele there. It would be, it's gonna be a plus for all of these houses in here. And they're, they're not gonna want that area, I'm guessing, to the south to be just a junkyard. They will, I would guess, clean it up and keep it nice. This is gonna be a nice project down here. Did you notice how they kept all of the trees? I don't remember, what kind of trees are those on Westlake Road? You guys kept those up? No, no, the flowering, the flowering green rhododendrons, those beautiful rhododendrons. Hopefully they'll leave them up. But they don't have to. They can do what they want with them, but they have the roadies there and they're trying to keep that nice. And I'm sure that they're gonna do, I'm not sure, I would guess that they're gonna, they want to make this nice too. But you have to realize this is in a transition point right now, which is probably why you're having the animal and, uh, things going on. But they're, they're going to, I would guess, clean this up. And where this retention basin is, will be nice around there.
Well, there are trees next door to me that are diseased and falling over and ready. Well, there are trees next door to me that are diseased and falling over and ready to fall on my garage, and they have not been removed, and you can plainly see they're diseased, and that's fine. You know, if they're diseased, they should be removed. But I just wondered what was gonna happen with them.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Did you have anything more to say here? Come on up, come on up.
There is one thing I wanna mention before you get up here, and with the traffic, especially during this season of Halloween, there's one person up on Linden that has an incredible Halloween sculpture that slows all traffic down. I don't know who that is. Everybody should-
He's here, he's here.
Everybody should take a second and go look at it.
Take, take that.
You just get him to keep that up all year long.
That's, that's another, another thing that adds a ton of traffic to Linden Avenue.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah. Yeah, maybe it'd be a violation or something, if they did it all year.
So, the questions with the pond, as the lady there mentioned, with the pond, it would actually, there wouldn't be trees behind her, or that brush that's kinda sitting there, that's preventing or causing the infestation? And it's, it's not a retention pond, it's gonna infiltrate. So, with the numbers, I believe, at the ten-year storm, it's gonna be point oh-six cubic feet per second, which is, it's very minimal for, for, for the amount of stormwater that could be if we had it be a, a pond that stores water. So, we, we ran our tests probably, probably four or five months ago, and it infiltrated well, which helped us. So, it will look, it'll look like an empty pond for ninety-five percent of, of the time. So, you don't have to worry about mosquitoes or any of that.
Because it infiltrates so fastly.
Correct.
Teeps into the soil.
Correct, because we made our surface area at the bottom enough to handle that water, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Sir?
Mark Miller, seven-twenty-eight Linden. I was just curious what they're gonna do with the gas well that's on that property that's basically right behind my aunt. On seven-two-seven, there's a gas well back there. I don't know if we have any info on that.
I, I, that, again, that's not part, Mark, that isn't part of this plan right now.
Oh, that's not part, okay.
I, I don't think so. That's really not relevant to-
I just saw it was by the retention, that's why I was asking.
An active one? Is it an active well?
I don't know, there's a, there's a box over top of it, I don't know what.
Could that, could that have actually been a water well that's left over from the old days? I think I've seen it back there, it's a cement, that might be actually just a, a pump well.
Is that what it is? Okay, I don't know, because there's a box over.
I don't think it's a gas well, because there's no metal pipe, I'm guessing.
Okay, I don't know.
But I think that might have been an old water well.
I was just curious, because it's by that retention.
A lot of the older homes in the area that you guys live in was out in the country, and I have a place on Chelsea that has a, a, a well still existing in it.
Okay. Okay.
But I don't think that's a gas well.
I don't know.
She said she thinks it was.
Yeah.
Just a quiet voice.
But it, well, it will have to be addressed, especially if it's near the retention pond.
Okay, okay, okay. That's all, thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else? Okay. That is the only two items that were on the agenda for tonight. We will take the few minutes here, and then we will discuss these two items and give our, make notes for the minutes of our recommendations to supervisors for their, their meeting at the end of the month.
But don't forget to drive past the spooky hauler on Linden.
How much you getting paid for this, man?
You gotta look at it, it's spectacular. Next time, don't give them twenty bucks before the meeting.
And take it a picture? I will do that.
I got a comment to make, but I'm not sure I want to make it.
What'd you say, are we ready?
So, I know a comment I wanted to make to these people, but I don't believe them.
Yes, well, in our meeting here-
It won't come out very-
Where is the curb cut off?
All right. Whoops, I may have missed that.
How many's he in?
Very fine. Were you gonna take a break at all, or just go into-
I don't think so.
All right, TKJ Associates, Associates, a subdivision plan to show the creation of a four thousand seventeen square foot parcel A from thirty-third, thirty-seventeen West Twelfth Street, resulting in a twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-nine square foot residual lot. Parcel A become part of, an integral part of thirteen thirteen Harper Drive, resulting in a twenty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-five square foot lot located in the southeast corner of West Twelfth and Harper Drive and track fourteen. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on this at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. All right, then the enclave, land development plan to show the construction of six duplex dwellings with associated stormwater management facilities and parking at thirty-five thirty-one West Lake Road, located southeast intersection of West Lake Road and Linden Avenue, track number nine. I hear a motion.
I'll second.
Second on the motion.
What was the motion again?
To approve.
To approve.
To approve.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I had a few things to say. I think our job really is listening. I'm not always sure this dialogue and the way that happens is the best, but it's sometimes what happens, and maybe it needs to. To the neighbors, I would say this, you're not selfish, you're being advocates, that's the American way. You present your thoughts, developers present their thoughts. It's our job to kind of try to see both sides based on current zoning and, and, and development, planning for the whole township. When I look at this plan, I, I think of some of my own life experience, so I grew up on Love Road. If you know where Love Road is by Lower Hill Cemetery, when my parents built there in nineteen sixty, my mother said to my father, "What the heck did you do taking me out to the country?" I saw two hundred houses built there with two ways, in and out. So, it changed the dynamics, but it also helped bring people to Mill Creek to pay taxes, to be, make a community. So, I think a lot of this is a back and forth, not one side's right, one side's wrong, we're trying to find a balance here. When I look at this plan, and I look on Linden, if those were single-family house lots, you probably could get four, maybe five, right on Linden, where people would be backing out maybe onto the street, which would not be an ideal thing. If this target of empty nesters fifty-five plus, half of these places might be empty half the year, because people will be in Florida or Arizona or other places. So, will there be more traffic? Yes. I can see from your perspective wanting things to be on Westlake. For me, as I process both sides, seeing the need of the township, looking at that neighborhood, I fall down on the side that the first plan, and I give, give credit for this, you spoke out. I didn't think it was a great plan, and I give credit to the developers who said, instead of trying to push it forward, let's go back to the drawing board. So, maybe not ideal for anybody, which you could either say is everyone loses, or maybe everyone wins a little bit. But keep advocating. Again, we recommend, go to the supervisors, speak to them, which is your right, and it's what makes our country great when we can actually talk to each other. So, my vote will be affirmative, but I, I respect those developing, I respect those who are advocating for your neighborhood, and that's the way the process is, and we're better for it when we can do it well.
Here, here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second, recommendation to the supervisors. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Before we, that's all the others we have on, we don't have any new business or any, do we? Other business to discuss tonight now. Keep in mind, folks, that the November meeting will be on the eleventh, the second Tuesday of November, rather than the first because of elections. Gives everybody here a chance to get out and vote, please, thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second, anyone opposed? Stand adjourned at eight, or, I'm sorry, six-thirty-three, two.